I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Coleman, would you open a prayer?
Certainly. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and for the blessings you bestowed on this county and each and every one of us. Lord, we are going through some trying times now. We ask for your guidance in every way. Lord, please lay your hand on us and let us have the wisdom that we need to make the decisions we need to make for the betterment of this county. We ask this all in thy heavenly precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you both.
Thank you. Welcome. It is February 20th. We've just gone through the month already.
Yes, impossible.
We have, I don't have the meeting minutes in front. We have two meeting minutes to get through. So it would have been last week plus the special, correct? All right. So with that, we'll start with approval of the meeting minutes for February 13th, 2025.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the 13th.
I'll second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
And Florida the 18th.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes of the 18th.
And I'll second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of accepting miscellaneous reports...
Any comments or questions on miscellaneous reports? Hearing none.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of requests for fund transfers...
Any comments or questions on our fund transfers? Hearing none.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of approving payment of the regular schedule of accounts for the various funds, moral obligations, and then annulled certificates in the total amount of $862,980.66.
Any comments or questions on our docket? Hearing none.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of request for appropriation transfer of funds...
Any comments or questions on item five? Hearing none.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of appointment to the Adams Board...
Yeah, so we received a recommendation from the Adams Board for the appointment of Carla Womack. This would be for the partial term dated 7/1/25 to 6/30/28. Carla's a fantastic member of this community. She actually was just featured in the Daily Times. Joseph Pratt wrote a very nice article highlighting Carla. So that was good timing, Joseph. I know you didn't quite know this was coming, but I think she'll be a great addition to the board. Any additional comments or questions?
She's great.
She's great.
Welcome our board.
All right.
There's a person.
Any, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of agreement between the Bloom Vernon Local School District and the Sauter County Sheriff regarding school resource officer...
Yep, it's that time of year to start renewing all of the sheriff's contracts with the schools and the townships. This is specifically for Bloom Vernon. Any comments or questions on their contract renewal? Hearing none.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of contract agreement between the Sauter County Sheriff's Office and the Sauter County Department of Job and Family Services regarding expanded police protection...
Once again, this is the agreement between the sheriff and job and family services to provide police protection. Any comments or questions? Hearing none.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of contract agreement between the Sauter County Sheriff's Office and Washington Township Board of Trustees regarding expanded police protection...
And now we consider Washington Township and the sheriff. Any comments or questions? Hearing none.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of contract agreement between the Sauter County Sheriff's Office and Clay Township Board of Trustees regarding expanded police protection...
That looks like our final sheriff contract to consider today, and this one is with Clay Township. Any comments or questions? Hearing none.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of certification of unpaid sewer rates and charges regarding sanitary engineer...
This is certification of unpaid sewer charges in the amount total of $199,880.8. And these will be placed onto the tax against these properties for collection. Any additional comments or questions? As you can see, it's a very long list, so if you do have outstanding sewer charges, please pay those. Any questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to accept.
I'll second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of change order number one for the Sauter County Engineer regarding 2024 hot mixed materials...
We have a change order from the engineer regarding a list of his materials that was presented to you for review. Any comments or questions on the change order? It ended up being a net decrease of $7,933.38. So there was a little bit of a change there. If there's no additional comments, can we get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Was it, is it on?
Right here.
Decrease seven, okay, net, okay, net decrease, gotcha. Okay, I will second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of agreement between Crowe LLP and the Sauter County Commissioners?
This is an agreement with Crowe. It's a law firm for cybersecurity. They're willing to be potentially reviewing a potential phishing attempt on the county system. This is a law firm that's recommended by Corsha, so we have this contract to consider. Any comments or questions? It's specifically at the rate of $290 per hour. Current scope and cost projects are expected to be approximately $8,870. Hearing no comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of recommendation for geotechnical services for the Otway Village CDBG infrastructure project regarding BX24-1CP2.
All right, the engineer's office received quotes from three contractors for the geotechnical exploration services for 2024 Otway Village Critical Infrastructure Project. Quotes received were from CTL Engineering of West Virginia at $19,425, DLZ for $19,747.80, and TerraCom for $21,800. And the Sauter County Engineer rated the proposals on the ability to complete the work by March 31st of '25, that's the deadline. Their experience prior work completed for the county and the price, and they recommended awarding the contract to CTL West Virginia Inc. for the CDBG Critical Infrastructure Grant in the amount of $19,425. Any additional comments or questions? If you recall, this is the project out in Otway that's going to help fix some drainage issues. We received $500,000 total for that project with our partners with CDC of Ohio. So it'll fix part of the road there on 73 as you're coming into the village. It'll fix some of their drainage issues as well. Very much needed infrastructure that's kind of been left out there, and the village just hasn't had the funds. So it was nice to see that we were able to get this grant for them. So this is the first of several, I'm sure, quotes we'll see to fix these issues on Otway. Any additional comments? Hearing none.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of programmatic agreement between the Sauter County Commissioners and Ohio State Historic Preservation Office for Administration of Programs Using HUD-Allocated Funds with Delegated Review Responsibilities, authorized under 24 CFR Part 58.
This is something we do every...
I believe it's five years.
Every five years, the programmatic agreement between Sauter County Commissioners and the Ohio State, Ohio Historical Preservation Office for the Administration of Programs Using HUD-Allocated Funds with Delegated Review Responsibilities, authorized under 24 CFR Part 58, or limited to the community development block grants, the home improvement partnerships, economic development initiative, emergency solutions grants, supportive housing, housing opportunities, neighborhood stabilization program grants, entitlement programs. And this agreement would expire December 31st of 2029. Excuse me. Any additional comments, questions? Hearing none.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of contract agreement between the Sauter County Engineer and American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFSMI, Ohio Council 8, Local Number 1354.
All right, this is the contract agreement between Sauter County Engineer and AFSMI, and it is effective March 19th, 2025 through March 18th of 2028. And the engineer is responsible solely for his budget. His funds come out of the gas tax. So within those funds, he then negotiates really what he can and can't do with the union. So they have come to an agreement for our consideration. Any additional comments or questions? Hearing none.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of agreement between the Sauter County Commissioners and Roger Hemming Contractor LLC with a notice of commencement and notice to proceed regarding Morgan Township Community Center Kitchen and Bathroom CDBG project.
Another CDBG project. This agreement's between the commissioners and Roger Hemming's construction in the amount of $47,671.40 for a kitchen and bathroom remodel project for Morgan Township, along with a notice to proceed dated February 20th, 2025, starting February 21st, 2025, completion date being August 31st of 2025, with the notice of commencement for public improvement section 1311.252 ORC. Any additional comments or questions?
Yes, I'm very glad to see that they're finally going to get their kitchen, and it's been a long time coming. So I'm very glad to see that they're going to be able to do that and continue on with helping with their community events as well as with their senior. I believe there are over 55 clubs still meets out there, and I'm very glad they're going to be able to have those.
Very good. If there's no other comments, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of easement and right-of-way between the Sauter County Board of Commissioners and American Electric Power regarding parcels 24-1625, 24-1624.
We have a couple easements to consider from AP. Those have both been presented to you. Any additional comments or questions regarding the easement request? Hearing none.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of easement and right-of-way between the Sauter County Commissioners, Board of Commissioners, and American Electric Power regarding parcel number 24-1625.000.
This is the second easement request. Any comments or questions? Hearing none.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of request for appropriation of funds...
Any comments or questions on our appropriations request? Hearing none.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of request from Portsmouth Sauter County Visitors Bureau regarding Hyodle Event Calendar for 2025.
Also, Nate Welch, the director of the Sauter County, Portsmouth Sauter County Visitors Bureau, has requested our organization, the commissioners, as well as some other local organizations, I believe, the Chamber of Commerce, the city. I want to say Main Street, but that might not be true. Double check with Nate. But essentially, to be able to put in a pretty robust calendar on the website. This board has expended $50,000 a couple years ago, marked with funds to completely rebrand and relaunch. That's where you see the Explore Sauter logo, the branding. Nate has been doing a fantastic job of executing that marketing plan and vision that those funds helped to pay for. This is another step to ensure that people understand what's going on in our community and a really easy place to go to see all of the many events that we have going on. Any additional comments or questions? Oh, and it is to the tune of $358 for the year.
And it's being shared by five or six other companies that will be paying similar. And also, it's very interactive, the calendar that was sent. Instead of just having a line item that's just very generic, doesn't really show or say too much about the event, this goes into greater detail for someone to be able to make a decision on how they're going to spend their hours during that. This goes into greater detail for someone to be able to make a decision on how they're going to spend their hours during that a lot of time. So it's a lot more friendly to the person.
All right, thank you. Any additional comments or questions? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Davis.
Hi.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Powell.
Hi.
In the matter of authorizing the chairman to negotiate an insurance policy regarding Greater Portsmouth Area Airport.
So this is a supplemental insurance policy for the airport. We have cover on all of the structures and the buildings and everything out there. We do, from time to time, have staff that would interact with airplanes, personal property. This is an insurance that would cover should something happen during the moving of a plane or helping somebody refuel or anything. It is at the amount of $1,995 a year. That's a current quote. This is to authorize the chairman to negotiate the policy and to sign off on the policy once we give the final amount. Any comments or questions? Hearing none?
I will make a motion to approve.
I will second.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Hi.
Mr. Powell.
Hi.
And that is the end of our agenda. We do have bid openings at 10 and 1010, which it looks like our contractors are coming in to see who might be awarded those. In the meantime, we can entertain some questions first from those here in the room. Any items on agenda, first and foremost? Nothing on agenda, anything off agenda? Bill Shove, if you would like to kick us off, assuming you have questions.
I do.
I don't think you show up just for the entertainment value.
Sometimes, sometimes, yeah. Thanks, guys. First of all, to go back and review, special meeting on Tuesday. Do you have any comments after the conclusion of the meeting regarding, you know, Mr. Horton's termination or anything like that? I don't know what you're allowed to say or not allowed to say, but after, you know, a couple of days have passed, I just didn't know if you had anything else that you would like to add to what happened Tuesday.
I do. It may not be specifically to that, but I have some comments that I want to make. And we may not have time, but I'll do my best. In February of 2023, a situation came up, and there was a meeting at the Republican Central Committee. And at that meeting, there was some information that was spread about a company that Commissioner Davis's wife and Robert Corden's wife were starting or had started. The articles of incorporation were there. I believe it had gotten started in October of '22. I could be wrong. But it was widely discussed at that meeting. I wasn't there that night, but there was an attendee there who was texting me and keeping me abreast of everything that was going on and what the discussion was about. The next morning, when we came into the office, we had a meeting. And I confronted Commissioner Davis about the discussion, asked him to please give us more information on it. I found out at that time that this company was in his wife's name and not his. And so he felt it was, if we had any questions, that we should direct them to her. My concern, and then I discussed it at that moment, was transparency, conflict of interest, and other things that were of concern to me. But Commissioner Davis maintained that everything had been going through her attorney and everything was okay. And within hours of that discussion, the prosecuting attorney's office contacted Commissioner Davis and told him that he, because of this conflict, what they felt was a conflict of interest, that he would have to abstain from anything to do with SOPA Airport or Benestar, which was the project we were in the middle of. We were in the middle of building a factory out there, and which would cause a problem for the Commissioners if Commissioner Davis had to abstain because we no longer have a quorum. So I voiced my concerns to him again, and he had told us all along that this newly formed company hadn't done any business, didn't even have a checkbook. And I said, if that's the case, would your wife consider withdrawing herself from that company? He said, I had discussed that with her. He'd get back to me. A couple of days later, I got an email from him and his wife, and she had withdrawn herself from that company. I emailed that document to our prosecuting attorney to see if that was enough to be able to lift the abstention so that Commissioner Davis could continue with his work as a commissioner to fulfill his duties. And they accepted it and said it was. I assumed everything was done and it was over and done with at that time. Until an investigation started in August, there was a search warrant served on SOPA. And Mr. Davis was on vacation at the time. And so the day after I came in, Commissioner Powell caught me as soon as I came in the door. And he informed me that he felt we needed to go into executive session and discuss what we should do towards Mr. Horton's employment. And so we did do that. And as I say it to you Tuesday, I believe, any decision I've made throughout this whole thing has been under the advice of council. So during, I'm not breaching executive session, but the fact is that our attorney, whenever Commissioner Powell made his recommendation for administrative leave, I felt that the warrant had just been served, and I said, let's just slow down a minute here. You know, this was an attempt to go in and find anything that might be construed as illegal or something. And I felt that at that moment, we were moving a little bit too quickly. The attorney told, our attorney said, Commissioner Coleman, you are right. But then he said, and this was your concern too, because of your...
Background.
Background. That in cases like this, the norm is to put an employee on administrative leave. And he said, and that is exactly true, you're both right. And so at that moment, and he also said, this is what I felt was important, that putting an employee on paid leave protects that employee as well as his employers, which would be us. And so at that moment, I thought I made the decision to go ahead and vote for administrative leave. Well, in the meantime, unbeknownst to me, some situations came up. Well, what happened then from that point, I didn't know how to administer that, but I said, maybe we should go through the attorney. The attorney sent over a form letter of administrative leave. It was filled out. I think he walked it over and delivered it to Mr. Horton or no?
It was texted.
Texted, okay.
He was notified.
He was notified. Unfortunately, I didn't look, and I will take full responsibility for this. I didn't look over carefully the terms of the guidelines for the employee while under a paid administrative leave. Some of them were, he couldn't talk to any county employee. He couldn't go back into that office. And unfortunately, all SOPA's records and files, anything to do with SOPA, was also in that office because they didn't have their office at the time. And so we had some very important things that came up, like within, I mean, within days of that being delivered to him. One was, it was fiduciary issues with a bond for pure cycle. And it had to be dealt with right then and there. But unfortunately, the director could not go in the office. He could not talk to anyone. He had no way to address this issue. And it would have had, the ramifications of that would have been very serious. We would have, it had to do with the bond. We might be responsible for paying. It was just a very complicated matter. So we discussed making some, and on the advice of council, he said that we could go back and make some changes to the guidelines, which we did, and it still didn't work out. And so after another week going by and this issue of this pure cycle bonds right there just could have been catastrophic for us as a county, I made the decision to revoke, to pull the administrative leave. That gave, at this time, the search warrant had already been served. All these records had been taken. I didn't know what, and again, I'm a firm believer, and I've said this from the beginning, a person is innocent till proven guilty. And I felt at that time that, you know, I don't know what more harm could be done. If there had been harm done, it hadn't come out yet, had been, and there was no charges yet, to let him go in and do this work. Now, there's been so many rumors, allegations. I think you and Mr. Steve Hayes, yesterday, my son-in-law said that you were talking about it yesterday on the radio, that you couldn't understand why he was brought back, and that was the million-dollar question or something to that nature. Well, that is it in a nutshell. You know, I regretted putting him on administrative leave because I felt we were acting too quickly because there were no charges. I am not really that well-versed on legality and things like that. I've been pretty shuttered in my work career, 42 years for one company. We didn't have to deal with things of this nature. But going on then, these questions or these, you know, comments that keep arising about why I, I wanted to make that clear. That is what I did. I take responsibility for not reading the order for the leave of administrative leave. I felt that the business of SOPA with regard to the county was important. It could have had some very financial, some heavy financial ramifications for the county. And so that is why I did that. Now, I just also want to make it very clear that, well, there's three of us here. That's why there's three of us. And there are many times in our years together, we don't always agree. That's why there's three of us. So since this all, since this situation has come up, you know, there's decisions that have to be made. If I make a decision, it always, and it leans towards Commissioner Davis. It's always like, Commissioner Coleman is siding with, you know, I'm a yes woman. I've seen this. I don't go on Facebook, but I've been told my daughter is, she wants, she's just very defensive. She wants to defend me, and she tells me, I said, just, I don't read it, I don't want to hear it, but I hear it. But, and then there's some times when I have sided with you that he hasn't been pleased. There are times in here where the clerk had to shut the door because I would be so upset with one or the other that, and I'd raise my voice. They had to close the door so that you folks in here couldn't hear our discussion. I am not a yes woman. I always make decisions concerning this county and its best interests. I always will. I've done that for eight years now. As far as the indictments, I'm going to say this once and for all. I never thought that Mr. Horton was involved in anything illegal. The indictments came out, and there are so many of them, and they are so grave, and that I was taken aback. I was just flabbergasted. And so with, after reviewing that, then it was my responsibility. And we had said, more of us, we'd all said this, but I had specifically said, I wanted to revoke the paid administrative leave, let him do his job. If the time came when there were charges or indictments, then I would act at that time that would best serve this county. And that is what I did Tuesday. So I don't know if anyone else has any question. Now, no matter what, I've made this statement. The doubters are going to doubt, the gossipers are going to gossip, and those that believe that, you know, that think we're guilty of something, they're going to think that anyway. But I want to take this opportunity to clear this up as far as myself. So are there any questions?
Before we jump to that, and I appreciate your comments and your passion, I do want to be mindful of our bid opening.
Yes, that's what I said. I knew that was coming.
Sorry.
And I'm sorry that I went over that.
So I do want, and that'll give people a chance to digest, but I do, because we do have a hard line. Darren, I know you have a couple of...
I apologize.
No, you're fine. You're absolutely fine.
I'll wait.
Bill, you're going to have to wait, Bill, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So we're going to get to our bid openings because we do have hard lines.
So I've taken two days off work to be here, to San Jose.
Yep.
So is there no time?
No, we'll take questions as soon as the bid openings are over.
Okay.
So bid openings, we have hard lines due to...
I'm sorry, I understand.
No, you're fine. No, absolutely fine. We'll definitely answer questions. But this has a hard line for us. I'm sorry, I'm sure that was kind of a whiplash of...
I expected. I feel like the little boy at Goonies when my mouth opens, blah, 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 blah. But I had to say what I had to say, and we will address your questions after the bid.
Perfect. It is 10:05.
So in the matter of bid opening for Henley Comstock Road Slip Repair SCIZR 44-2.89 regarding the engineer. The first bid is ANT Management.
So this project is a repair of a slip in Henley Comstock Road. It's approximately probably about a mile off of a state route 348.
Is that the one you're going up the hill there? Oh, off 348.
Off 348, yeah. So, and then this is, we do have a high caliber works commission, emergency funding now funded.
Perfect.
So this bid is from ANT Management, Inc., out of Peebles. The total bid amount is $363,059.34.
Next bid is Sauter Valley Paving.
Okay, this bid is from Sauter Valley Paving out of Lucasville.
The next one is Allard Excavation LLC.
This bid is from Allard Excavation out of South Webster.
The next one is from Skeens Excavating and Reclaim.
Okay. Yeah, this bid is from Skeens Excavating out of Wheelersburg. Six hundred forty thousand, ninety-four dollars and twenty-five cents. Six four zero, comma, zero nine four, point two five.
And the last one does not have the company on the outside.
Okay, this bid is from Allen Stone Company, in Vincent, Ohio, Allen Stone. The total bid amount is four hundred fifty-seven thousand, four hundred five dollars and zero cents. Four five seven, comma, four zero five, point zero zero.
One minute.
Is that it? Several bids, glad to get to the bids on that, so...
All right, we'll entertain a motion to forward the bids to the engineer for review and recommendation.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye. It is now ten ten, so we can move forward with our second bid opening.
In the manner of bid opening for Hayport Road Culvert Replacement SCI CR two five seven dash one point zero six regarding the engineer.
Okay, this is a replacement of a culvert, pretty close to the full dock, they're right on the river. Usually this is stuff that our crews do, but it's a little deeper, so we're bidding it out.
The first bid is Leighe Contracting.
I'm sorry, repeat that.
Am I saying that right?
Probably not, Leighe, I guess Leighe.
Sorry, Leighe.
I misspelled that.
L E I G H T Y.
Yes.
Okay, so this is the grand total, this is from Leighe Contracting, out of South Point. Grand total eighty-three thousand, five hundred seventy dollars and zero cents. Eight three, comma, five seven zero, point zero zero.
Next bid is Southern Ohio Trenching and Excavating.
Okay, Southern Ohio Trenching and Excavating, out of Ironton. One hundred ninety thousand dollars even. One nine zero, comma, zero zero zero, point zero zero.
The next bid is from J R General Construction.
Okay, this bid is from J R General Construction, out of Lucasville. Seventy-four thousand, four hundred eighty dollars and zero cents. Seven four, comma, four eight zero, point zero zero.
The next one is from Sider Valley Paving LLC.
Okay, Sider Valley Paving, out of Lucasville. Seventy-two thousand dollars and zero cents. Seventy-two, comma, zero zero zero, point zero zero.
And the last bid is from Skeens Excavating and Reclaim.
Okay, Skeens Excavating, out of Wheelersburg. Eighty-two thousand, nine hundred dollars and zero cents. Eight two, comma, nine zero zero, point zero zero. Is that it?
All right, and with that, we'll entertain a motion to forward the bids to the engineer for review and recommendation.
Motion to accept and refer.
And I'll second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, engineer, appreciate you guys. Thank you. And we will jump back into questions, Bill, I'm sorry we...
It's all right.
Had to sit down for a second. I think your original question is, if we had any other thoughts regarding termination, Robert, I, I did want to clarify the SOPA piece of this, I saw some reporting, I think that might have had a little confused, so the SOPA board is not meeting to remove Robert, that falls on the shoulders of the commissioners, so the meeting on the twenty-seventh at ten is a commissioner meeting, it's not a SOPA meeting, so I did want to clarify that, I saw, and, and I get it, it's a little convoluted, but I did want to clarify that. I'll tell you that, I didn't have any additional comments regarding Tuesday.
Commissioner Davis, did you have anything?
I would echo a lot of what Commissioner Coleman said, as far as the, about the issue about bringing him back, when we did. When he was put on leave, of cour-, I wasn't here when it happened, okay, for one thing, but there were a lot of fiduciary duties that were going to fall upon, nobody knew who was going to be able to do the work. The bonds that were in question was pure cycle, there were debts that had to be paid, in other words, there were bills that had to be paid, there were payments to the county even, for repayment of loans that had to be made. In other words, SOPA, and there was this statement that was made, I forget what news source said it, what business does SOPA do? SOPA is very much is a business. They receive payments, they distribute monies, they handle bonds, they're a bonding agent, they have multiple bonds that they're responsible for, and with that, you have to conduct business. If you fail to conduct business, there can be fees, there can be penalties, there can be defaults even, if those things aren't done. So, when the question came up about restoring him, it was very much about, you know, this is a nation of laws, you are innocent till proven guilty, there was, at that time, there was a, and Commissioner Powell stated, that there was an open investigation, it was clear that there was, State of Ohio versus Robert Horton, but that there was no indictment, there was no, there was, there was a lack of knowledge on a lot of fronts as to what they were doing or what they were going after, okay? But at the same time, you can't set SOPA to fail. I mean, that, that in and of itself can be looked at as a tort interference of business lawsuit, so you have to be careful not to do that. So, in, in order for them to be able to conduct business, which if they hadn't, there, there could have been a major default, there could have been creditors that were not satisfied, there could have been loans not repaid to the county that were conducted. So, by doing that, and I will tell you, that by a sliver, I mean, a sliver of a hair, was all of that avoided. That's factual, all right? He was able to go get that business done, conduct business with the port authority, and they were able to make sure that all got done, okay? Debts were satisfied, payments were made, paperwork was passed, their attorney, you know, works with them on all of that, we're not privy to everything, we don't know what all of that was, or how that works, except for, I have enough knowledge to know how bonds work, and if you don't pay bonds, you don't make bond payments, that is bad. You work for a school board, I mean, you're on a school board, you know what that looks like, if you don't make payments, that, that turns very bad very quickly. So, that was the reason behind bringing him back. Whether that was absurd, ludicrous, or whatever, in some people's mind, that's fine, we don't always agree, we don't always agree. But I will tell you that the fallout from that would have been way worse, way worse for the county, because it would have fallen back on the county of Siderville. So, it, it, it was a prudent matter at the time, matter at the time, and it was necessary. And then just waiting, waiting to see where it went, we, we didn't know, we had no idea, knowing what was going on exactly, they hadn't informed us exactly what was going on, what they were looking for, this has been going on for two years, Bill, this isn't new. Matter of fact, at one point, the Attorney General was involved, and the Attorney General walked away. So, it, it, this has all been out there, it's been brewing, and there, there's a lot of questions, there's a lot of innuendo, there's a lot of falsities, falsehoods that have been spoken, and there will be a time and place where this will all come out. You know, what we have is an indictment of two, well, three individuals, and there's statements being made about them. An indictment is an accusation, brought before a grand jury, in the State of Ohio, we have grand juries. Grand juries are given one side of the story, the prosecutor's side of the story, and they determine not guilt, that's not what they determine, they determine if there's enough evidence to move forward with a court case, okay? You know this.
Yeah, I'm sure.
You understand how it works, you understand how it works, okay? And that's how that works. So, there is accusations made, again, one side, and sometimes, grand juries get it wrong, because they aren't given the other side of the story. We've seen that play out in the public sphere how many times, here recently, not just at the national level, but also at the local level, grand juries got it wrong, because then, once that evidence is brought and scrutinized by a jury of your peers, and both sides are given, and sometimes, those things don't happen. And you know this, I mean, we've had recent cases here lately, where there's been prosecutions brought, and juries have overwhelmed, and we came back and said, no, that's not the case. So, and that's at the local level. So, there will be a time and place to comment on these accusations, I've said it before, I'll say it again, everybody needs to wait, they need to look, they need to see when the evidence comes out. But, there is a lot of conjecture and innuendo out there, a lot of things being said that are unfair, it's not even funny, a lot of people are making stuff up, and then there's also just slanderous comments that are being made, but, the time will come, but, we go by what our attorney says, we, we take their advice seriously, you know, the, the decision the other day, I made a comment, and, and Commissioner Coleman, and you know this for a fact, I said, if something would come back later, and this was about bringing him back to service, to putting him back on payroll, that if something came out later, that I, I would vote to take care of business at that point, and in this case, you saw what happened on Tuesday, okay? But that I would reverse course. I made that commitment, did I not, Commissioner Coleman, I made that commitment, and I fulfilled that commitment. So, I'm not going to say anything more, Bill, but, I, I just wanted to state that fact, that there is a lot of things being said, and none of this is, is good, none of it helps our community, we realize that, but, we're trying, and, and the other comments about secret meetings behind closed doors, and, and how, you know, all this other stuff, their executive sessions are what they are, they're meant to protect the person being discussed, in this case, it was an HR issue, those are, we, how many executive sessions have we done in the course of our time here?
Hundreds.
This is normal operating procedure, and for people to make comments that are inflammatory, to get clicks, or to get responses from people like that, it's just wrong.
I, I agree with that, absolutely.
And I knew you would, because you understand how it works, how many times has the Siderville Community Schools went into executive session, and you do it because employees deserve that protection, that, that level, okay?
And so do boards.
Huh?
And so do boards.
Yes, so, and, and they need to be able to hear from their legal counsel, okay, here's what we got, here's what we're looking at, here are your choices. And, and we were given multiple choices the other day, and, and, but there was, there was stronger this time, you know, originally, it was, you could do either or, you could do either or. My understanding was, the, the, to put him on leave or not to put him on leave, there was either or, you're not right, you're not wrong, it's either or, you have to make a choice, okay? This time around, there was a stronger sense that it was time to, to separate, okay? So, that's what we did. I'll leave it at that.
And then thank you both to Kathy and Brian about the commentary and stating Mr. Horton some months ago, that's what I was asking about several months ago, and, for whatever it's worth, I think if we'd had the answers that you gave today, there wouldn't be a lot of that conjecture that's sitting out there. And, and that's why I've always said, all I'm here for is clarification, to clear up these rumors, because rumors like, like these, and rumors aren't always false, but the ones that are hurt not only the people that's being talked about, but they also hurt, like, my industry as well, because we get lumped in with people that do things on social media, you can check my social media, I've never made a comment, or an accusation, or anything like that, all I've ever asked for is, you know, confirmation and clarification on things. That, that's why I asked yesterday, I'm sorry, Tuesday, about following advice of the council. You addressed it. Let me, let me clarify. But I go back, the, the reason I ask about it is because I went back, and when records were voted to be turned back over to Mr. Horton, Mr. Powell, Commissioner Powell made the comment that that was against the advice of legal counsel, and I wasn't trying to nail anybody or do anything Tuesday, I was just wanting to make sure that legal counsel had said something.
But that, their recommend, there was hun- hundreds and hundreds, and their concern was that it, there were certain things in there that, that didn't pertain to SOPA, but the request, and, and what was followed through with, was to return only SOPA documents and records. The attorneys feared that, in amongst all of this, this documentation, that there were, there were things in there that, that pertained to other, you know, that, that didn't pertain to SOPA at all. So, that was the request, to return only the SOPA, the things that pertain to SOPA.
So, I, I want to clarify a couple of things, Bill, just, so when we talk about, in the advice of the legal counsel, and this is more of a procedural thing, just so people understand, most of the time, legal counsel is not telling us do this, do that, that's not what they're doing, it ultimately falls, it is a decision that rests on this board. What a legal counsel is doing, and for our HR issues, we do not use the prosecutor's office, we have an outside attorney that's specific for HR. What they do tell us is, you can do these things legally, you are in your right to do whatever you choose, and he, he does a very good job of not telling us one way or the other one to go with, but he does give us our options, e- even on Tuesday, one of the options could have been just do nothing, legally, we could have done that. So, legal counsel is ensuring that we don't go awry of any HR laws, but we have multiple options that we can follow. Even going back to, you know, the original decision to, to place only, bring back, not bring back, and, and now everybody knows, but what we had at that time was a document, a search warrant that said State of Ohio versus Robert Horton, and we knew it was a criminal investigation. In my world, if there's an allegation, not even a criminal investigation, if there's an allegation of fraud, abuse, neglect, anything like that in healthcare, you just tell somebody to go home, and you don't come back until it's over, because you don't keep putting somebody back in a situation where they could keep doing the same thing. I understand the concern that both the other commissioners had when first we brought back with guardrails, which I was against, and then brought back full duty, once again, that I was against, because the premise was, if, if Robert's not back, this thing falls apart. What we felt is, to state, is there's four members on that board that could have picked up the pieces and ran with it still, and, and apparently, there wasn't a comfort level to do that, they still had a treasure in place, they still had their legal counsel to help them through the system. Once again, was legal counsel involved with these decisions? They gave us our options. It's not legal counsel's decision to tell us what to do, they can recommend, and, and as Commissioner Davis stated, there was a stronger recommendation on Tuesday, but truly, what we're walking through is what we can and can't do legally, and, and that, that depends on if somebody's classified, are they unclassified, are they union, are they not, so, he, he's really helping us kind of navigate those waters. Specific to the records request, that was something that we reviewed by the prosecutor's office, part of that concern was, we got a list of documents that we didn't know if they were SOPA or not, they were kind of mixed in with everything, and their recommendation was, we need to see the documents, if it falls under, if it falls under public records law or not, and there's some other issues, but it was the prosecutor's office that said, hey, it needs to go this other process, and then for whatever... And then for whatever reason, this board chose to, um, forego that process and just hand over a, a download of, of the requested documents without being reviewed by anybody. Do I recognize that those folks still had control and access to those files? Yes, because they straddled the line of employee and SOPA. I understand that. But time and time again from this desk, you have heard that SOPA is a separate entity. So when we are releasing something of ours to a separate entity, there should be a, a specific process to follow, in my opinion. So, yeah, I, I did want to clarify, you know, we talk about legal counsel and did you go against legal counsel, did you not? In the HR issue, we're given options.
And that's all I was trying to do is clarify what had happened from, you know,
Yeah.
three weeks ago. And that's why I asked the question yesterday.
Yeah, that, that was, that was separate than the HR issue. That was more of a public records, uh, records retention issue, um, that prosecutor's office was working with SOPA's attorney on, um, to try to come to a conclusion. This board took action, um, prior to, to that happening, so.
On the, on the records issue, let me clarify on a couple of things on that myself, okay? First of all, um, when that all came up, the first issue that was made by the prosecutor's office was that we were going to be giving records away, that we weren't going to maintain those records. Well, here's the problem with that. All they were talking about was digital records. These are digital records, these are government records. All of those records are available per open records laws. Bill, you could, you could put in a request tomorrow and say, I want a copy of all these records, okay? I was literally told that by the assistant prosecutor. All right? That, that was the statement that was made. Now, within that, there was some, um, the big issue was the opioid lawsuit. That was the argument, was these records need to be maintained for the opioid lawsuit because we are under a order to maintain all records, of course. And we know that. So what you're dealing with is, is you have a digital copy of all those records, because everything we were talking about was emails, um, and then anything that would have been on the OneDrive, anything that was a document created. It, it's all there. All this stuff is backed up on a daily basis. Okay, we have this thing called Ninja, and it costs us a whole bunch of money, okay? They do that on a daily basis. What they were asking for was a copy of their records that they have already seen before and that are public. Now, there was one nuance in there, and that was ARPA. Remember, ARPA came up and there was grants.
There was time sheets, there was HR files.
But again, those are, those are documents that are, they're.
That would be redacted if we released to a public, if Bill asked, had the same public records required, it would be redacted.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. So he, what he wanted was, and this was the big issue, uh, and ARPA came up. Is there anything in the ARPA? There was some ARPA monies that were spent on local businesses. Remember the grants, the small business grants? They handled those applications. They saw all of that already, so that wasn't information that they hadn't already seen, okay? Matter of fact, there wasn't financials involved as far as, you know, copies of financials, things like, it, it wasn't there. But here is the big issue that was happening at the time, and this is kind of interesting how this works. They, at the same time, SOPA, and then that, and then the Economic Development Office, two separate things, were going through audits. As a matter of fact, um, you know, I, I know that there was inquiries that went through this office, asking the same questions about grants, things like that. We have to report to the auditor's office what we did on grants and all of that. Well, they were getting the same request. He didn't have them. He didn't have the records, because he couldn't, he couldn't access them in order to send that information. So here you have an auditor's office investigating on this side, and then you have the other side of the auditor's office saying, hey, by the way, we need records for 20, I don't know what year it was, 2023, 2022. We need those records and we need them now. And there was even a, uh, another request from the Attorney General's Office that had to do with, uh, a payment, uh, that they needed clarification. I think it was a payment or something. It wasn't, it wasn't anything to do with the investigation, it was just another, or treasurer, I'm sorry, it was treasurer's office, that they needed information on. Well, all of that was obtained, it, it's all in those records. And he needed those records to be able to do that job and to avoid issues on those fronts. So that, that was another deciding factor, that they weren't able to continue to conduct business. And I think a big part of all this is the fact that there was an attempt to please don't stranglehold and don't cripple our ability to do economic development in this county to the point where they can't even send a, a document. And that's what was happening. And they needed to be able to share that information in order to stay out of trouble with those entities who wanted audits, they wanted paperwork for audits. These things go on all the time. We're audited all the time. And that's what was happening at the time. That's why the decision was made to do that. They weren't receiving anything that they hadn't seen already.
All right.
It's confusing, I know.
Well, no, not really. I mean, it's, it's really not, it's a lot, but it's not confusing. But those are the kind of details that, you know, a month or whatever it was ago, probably would have been helpful as far as people understanding or having a better perception of what took place.
And I apologize, Bill, I don't know if we were asked that question at that time.
Yeah.
Okay? About the records?
No, it's about, about why, about why there was a reinstatement so, so quickly.
Uh, I'll have to do like you did, go back and look.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I was right the first time I did it, so. Also, looking at, um, the indictment issue, I don't know if you can answer it or not. Has anybody officially identified, uh, who the John Does and Jane Does are in the indictment? Or are you guys allowed to comment on that? Because there's, there was a lot of garbage out there about it and everything, and I don't know if you guys can comment on that or not.
I, I'm, I'm reading this document over and over again.
Same, yeah.
And, um, you know, um, there, there's, you know, they, they'll, they, they stated on there as, I don't know how they stated it now, I'd have to go back and look. But anyway, um, they mentioned these other, uh, uh, other, uh, people or entities. But, um, I, I don't, I, I don't really feel, a- a- and again, that I want to comment on that because it is an investigation. I'm not privy to what they have, and I would just be surmising or guessing, so I'm, I
And that's why I'm asking, just so, I mean, people know that you're bound by certain things and, and restricted.
And going back to some of the earlier things, there has been two investigations. One in 2023. I was interviewed in July of 2023 by the AG's office. I was asked not to discuss this. I had another interview with the State Auditor's Office. And, um, looking, you know, uh, the, the actual investig, the investigations were, now, I, I can't speak for what they ask others, because there was a number of people interviewed. But it was two different, two different, um, two different discussions. The second one, uh, in the first one, the investigator that was, uh, for the State Auditor's Office was in the room when I was being interviewed, but that was under the purview of the Attorney General's Office. The second one was he alone. And when I questioned him about the previous one, because they were interviewed, and it just, it, it just stopped. And he commented, you know, he, that was not his, but this one was. So again, he asked me, you know, not to discuss this. So I've been reluctant to just say anything, but now that the indictment has been filed, I feel that I can speak, um, more freely, especially when it comes to me specifically and the comments and, and allegations and gossip and everything that's going on about me. I'm just want you to know my stance on why I did it. And, and another thing, uh, it, one of the things that got back to me was that, um, and I believe fair is fair, uh, that they were saying that Commissioner Davis, you know, is the one who brought him back. Commissioner Davis was on vacation. I'm the one who made the, uh, the motion to, uh, allow him to come back. And then we voted on it, and it was two to one. So I want to clarify that, and it might make me, in the eyes of them, oh, she's guilty, she's more, you know, but fair is fair. He did not, that was not his motion. I made the motion because I felt that I had acted hastily and for my reasons. I, you know, I regretted, uh, putting the man on leave from the beginning. But I'm, and I understand his opinions and, and so forth. But I, I'm just speaking from where I'm coming from, my thought process, how I feel, how, you know, uh, I, I, I always feel like I want everyone to be treated fairly. And, um, and then there is due process of law. And so, um, I just want to make sure, because in the past, we've had a couple of other terminations that were done hastily and with regret, I believe. And, um, uh, so I, I want to make sure, and, and, and maybe not so fairly. So I wanted to make sure that this was, this, that, that this man, until something concrete came out, that he, you know, he was, in, in my opinion, innocent till proven guilty. Now, I understand, and looking at it from your point of view, I, I, I totally agree. And I, I have no problems with his opinions or whatever, but it's just a, it's just a personal thing, and that's what I act on. But I also want to state, before we get off of here, so everyone out there, you know, hears it. I have, I have, I am not, have nothing to do with what those indictments. I, I, um, I'm not involved in that. And if, you know, I'll say it right now. I am not involved with the, the, um, claims and, and things in no way, shape or form with the indictments against Mr. Horton. When it's, I just want to say it right now.
Thank you. Anybody else, someone's on?
Uh, I'm, look, there, there's a lot of innuendo flying around, um, and, and I'm not going to comment. I think we probably all have opinions on who the Johns and the Janes are. It, it's ultimately up for the, the auditor of state to take action and to reveal that. And I hope they do so swiftly, uh, so this isn't lingering, um, in the county longer than it needs to be. And that's, that's where I'll leave the, the guesswork, if you will, because that's, that's what it could be at this point.
That's it for me. Guys, thanks for your time and thanks for your answers, all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Since I was here during that bit, do I need some? It's up to you, Bill. We know who you are. If you don't sound in, that's fine. Hi, uh, please state your name, um, so we know who we're talking to.
Hi, good morning. My name's Katie Cochran.
Katie?
Yes.
Are you with a, uh, with a?
A concerned citizen.
Oh, a citizen, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, great.
Hi. Uh, so first, I'd like to just follow up. Uh, Commissioner Davis, you said that there have now been three people indicted? Who's the third person that's not a Horton?
Um, I, I believe it was the, uh, Frank Dockery.
Okay. So, um, is it possible then that John Doe one has been identified as Mr. Dockery? Okay. So I want to ask, because there's a public perception that these accusations came to light from an employee, um, who was terminated. I may have the details wrong here, um, but as the commissioners and as the, um, I don't know if employer is the right word, uh, the Director of Economic Development and the employer of the President of SOPA, did you conduct an investigation into these accusations? And why or why not?
So the, the accusations in reference, uh, was brought to my attention on Valentine's Day of, uh, 23.
Okay.
And I think I know who you're referencing. I, I don't want to get into too much HR stuff just because protections of the person and of the county. But that was, that was well after, um, that separation had occurred. If I had to go back and look, I think it was probably months and months after. But that's when the allegations and the documents that I saw, that showed some business filings, showed, um, you know, Robert Horton is a representative of O'Steel. That all came out on Valentine's Day of 23. So that, that's when I was made aware of any potential allegations there.
And what, what you're referring to, this, this, um, during the Republican Central Committee meeting, there were some documents brought out. And as I said, I wasn't there, but I addressed it the next morning. And I felt I did what I, I did question Commissioner Davis. The, the business was not in his name, but his wife's. I would, I still addressed the issues. I, I was concerned because he serves on the same board. And, um, and then, um, when his wife divested herself from this company, and as chair at the time, when I received that document, I forwarded it to the prosecuting attorneys. So at that point, you know, I felt, you know, that I was done with that, you know, basically, because, um, it was now in the hands of the prosecutor's office. But, um, and, and, and his wife was no longer a party to that organization. So, and then, you know, with, within, well, that was in February. Then there were, again, like I said, there was an investigation, um, like I, I believe July is when I was interviewed. And then, but then that didn't, as I said before, those questions weren't about, uh, SOPA or Robert Horton, they were something else. And then the, uh, interview in August was pertaining to SOPA and Robert Horton alone.
So the commissioner's office did not investigate any financial documents after Robert Horton was accused of stealing? Is that it? That's, that was my question.
The, the.
There, there wasn't allegation of, there wasn't, in fairness, there wasn't an allegation of theft. What, what was brought to, and I'll speak for myself, what was brought to my attention was potential, the conflict of interest. So, um, not in terms of theft, not in terms of kickbacks, some of the stuff you've seen in the indictment. What was brought to my attention, I believe, Commissioner Coleman, Commissioner Davis, you saw the same documents, it was the question of conflict of interest. So when we're sitting in, within the government, like you, we cannot use our positions to enrich ourselves, our families, our business partners. So that, that's what raised the question. Hey, if, if, if you're in this business, do you have a conflict? Hey, if, if you're a sales rep for this organization that has done business with the same group that you control funds for, do you have a conflict? So, um, at that point, we didn't know, like, we, we don't have the ability, uh, from this vantage point to go to somebody's bank account, from this vantage point to see if that happened. That is a, that, that, that's the legal process. That's the, the investigators, that's the, you know, the auditor of state, the AG, like they, they have that authority and ability to do that. Once again, when you get into ethics law, it is, it's one, it's self-reportable. I have a conflict, I'm, I'm not being involved. And it's not just the vote, but anything to do with anything regarding that matter. But two, like, to investigate it is truly on the, on the criminal side of, of, I guess, government, if you want to look at it that way.
Sure.
And I'm going to add something to a comment you made. You said something about, um, that you found out, when you found out that, uh, Robert Horton was a sales rep. I did not find that out until much later, months later. It was after the search went in, that investigation, but it was still hearsay. That was not, uh, uh, brought out to me in the, i- i- in the interview that I had. So, so again, um, I was not aware that this claim that he was a sales rep for the parent company, O's, O'Steel, until just a few months ago. So I want to make that clear for my, uh, self.
Yes. So, um, the statement was made during this meeting that, you know, there were other members of the board, um, at SOPA. I would imagine, and I don't know this to be true, so I could be speaking wrongly, that there should be another employee at the, um, Department of Economic Development. Why was there no confidence in those board members or other employees to take the place of, and, and be an acting director or acting president, uh, for Mr. Horton versus reinstating him?
These are all volunteer. These are all volunteer, this board is voluntary. They don't get paid. It's a, it's a, it's an extreme responsibility. And, um, it's not that they couldn't, it's that I, I, I truly believe that from, from some of the things I heard, that there was no interest in these folks to, to, uh, move into that role.
Um, but when they're on the board, isn't that their responsibility to?
That is, I, you know, that, every board is different. And there, again, I'm not, I'm not trying to evade any questions. It's that, that is, that, the SOPA board, all we do is appoint. We appoint members to that board. And then, you know, that is, you know, they have to determine their responsibilities towards their position.
So, for clarification, the SOPA board wanted Mr. Horton reinstated because they did not want to? Yeah, I didn't think so. Um.
I, I didn't talk to any of the SOPA board members.
I have not talked to, to them.
So, you reinstated him without speaking to the board?
We haven't, we didn't, we did not reinstate him to the board. He is still the director of the SOPA.
I understand.
Even, even while he was on, um, leave as an Economic Development Director, he was still on the SOPA board.
Okay.
The leave itself prevented him from interacting with any county property or county employees. The wrinkle that created was SOPA material was in county property. And one of the board members, um, is also an Economic Development employee that, that's also on board. So, that was the wrinkle that it, it kept creating, that, um, Mr. Horton couldn't interact, um, with parts of SOPA because of the intermingling of the two organizations, quite honestly, because we were paying their salaries, they were employees of ours. So, um, that's where we kept running into trouble. He was never suspended from SOPA. We don't have that power. Um, you, you can see next week that we do have the authority to remove, but there's a process. Um, but during the leave, because of the county employment piece, he couldn't have interaction with certain things to do with the county. And yet SOPA was so entang, entangled with the county that it, it limited the ability to continue any of, of SOPA's business at the same time. Is that fair?
It's fair.
Okay.
Um, how many monetary contracts did Mr. Horton award during his time as Director of Economic Development?
Through Economic Development? It, well, through SOPA, we wouldn't know, and that would be a SOPA question. Through Economic Development contract specific?
ARPA.
ARPA.
In Cares Act.
Yeah. Quite a bit. I mean, we'd have to give that number quite a bit. You know, money flowed through that office.
So, has an investigation been done into his involvement by the commissioners in those contracts since these allegations and indictments have been made?
Uh, there's been no additional, uh, action from this board to investigate. Um, once again, the, the auditor of state's office would be able to, I'm assuming, in fairness, uh, be able to point us back to something if they saw money exchanged hands or went into different companies or whatever. So, um, you know, we're still reliant on them to be able to show us. Um, and then a lot of that's still sealed from us. Like, we still don't have vision into that. So, we'd be relying on them to give us, um, if we had to look at something else right now.
And, and I wrong in saying that, uh, the money from ARPA had strict re, uh, uh, guidelines? Who could receive it? And it, and, and it had to be run through the attor, uh, attorney's office?
Yeah.
Every single transaction. So, you know, that.
And it's a different, you're, you're talking about a different, uh, scenario too. You're talking about small businesses that came and said, um, and during COVID primarily, that came and said, look, you know, I need five grand here, I need ten grand there to survive. And I know at that time, there was probably in Cares Act, I think there was forty-one, something like that, businesses that received help. And all of those businesses, to my knowledge, are still in business. Um, that was a great, a great program that helped a lot of companies at the time, businesses at the time. Uh, and as what was mentioned here, it had to go through a very deliberate process in order for those monies to flow. Every sub-grant agreement was created and done by our prosecutor's office. Um, and then there was check presentations where applicable. Some, you know, people don't want their business out there. That's totally understandable, right? It was a tough time for everybody. But the difference is, is you're dealing with the small business grants. They're not bid. You know, they're not, they're not that type of deal where, you know, where this, on the other side of this, you know, some of the accusations were made, those were bid contracts, those were building, that something was being built, basically. So, that's the difference. So, I, I don't know. All of those are tested. I do know, I do know that part of that was tested. As part of the audit in twenty-three, they looked at some of those grants, the State Auditor's Office does. That's just normal. That's checks and balances. Um, and that, by the way, is some of the records that they needed him to have and needed from him in order to finish their audit of the Economic Development Office on that side of the business. So, that is a great example, actually, your question.
And, and the audits that he's talking about are audits that are, that are, that, that don't have anything to do with.
They're mandated.
The indictments or anything. These are standard audits.
Early audits.
Yes, sure.
Yeah, early on.
Sure. Um, and my last question, um, at what time did Mrs. Davis remove herself from the business in question?
I, that's funny because I had, I was going through my desk, they're cleaning my desk, and I found the document, and I sent it to the prosecutor's office on four twenty-three of twenty-three. Yeah, twenty-three.
What time? Four twenty-fourth of twenty-three?
And I.
It's April.
And I believe that the paperwork floating around the county says that, um, the license was filed, I, I think, in July of twenty-two. So, did she serve in that position almost a year?
I don't, I don't, I don't know those dates, um, quite honestly. Um, I do know this, that, and I, I'll be very brief. There is a difference, and this is where some of the confusion comes in, just to be quite honest.
Sure.
Um, you know, you had a contractor, I mean, you had a company as a supplier, not a contractor, but as a supplier, um, that was still Carolina, down in Carolinas, that sold a building to SOPA back in twenty? I think it was.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, yeah. And that did happen, that, that transaction happened. But what we're talking about is a separate company, okay, set up in twenty-two. I, I don't have my dates here. I don't have them front of me. And that is a company that never conducted business, that never did anything, never did, never worked with SOPA, never worked with the county, never did anything, okay? And we, we were advised by our assistant prosecutor that there was options. You know, that there was this, um, accusation and how to resolve, okay? And quite honestly, her statement to me was, I don't want to interfere in your ability as a commissioner. As much as you love your job, you know, they, they wanted to build churches and, and barns and, they wanted to go, there was so much other that can be done, you know, other than Soda County, SOPA. It, it, that, that, she's like, I, I don't want, I don't want to cause an interference with that. You know, so those kind of things come out in time. It goes along with what I said about, you know, there's, there's, um, a time and place for all of it. But I think that's where a lot of the confusion is coming. She had nothing, nothing to do with that. Purchased a building, uh, uh, sold a business par, none of that. So, that is something that will come out in time. And we'll, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it, if we get to it. But, but anyways, it, it is what it is. But no, that's, uh, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have my dates in front of me. I don't, I haven't looked at it. But, um, I'm glad Commissioner Coleman did.
Yeah. Thank you for your time. Thank you for explaining some things that I, you know, I just wouldn't have the, the ability to understand otherwise. So, thank you, guys.
Thanks for coming in.
Uh, my name is Scott Leath. Good morning. I'm a freelance journalist based here in Fort Smith. I appreciate you taking the time this morning to explain a lot of things, really. Uh, I just, I'm going to keep it real brief. Uh, who will lead the County Economic Development Office now?
Uh, more to come on that. Uh, we're, we're still, um, recovering from Tuesday. Uh, so we'll be, um, part of the plan is to see how next Thursday goes. And I think we probably all have a feeling how next Thursday goes in terms of, uh, the removal of Robert Horton from the SOPA board. Uh, then we, we do want to have an opportunity to sit down with the board to see, you know, what does economic development look like in Soda County? Um, so right now, uh, if there's any inquiries, they can still reach out to this office. If there's any organizations, um, they can still reach out to this office. I know, uh, Jobs O'High reached out, uh, to me just the other day for just some information on, on site. So, um, in the meantime, I guess we're the ones, uh, fielding the calls and making connections, but, um, you know, more to come on that.
Okay. Are there, are there any other employees currently employed in the County's Economic Development Office?
Uh, we have a project manager, um, that is part-time, and then we do have, uh, an office manager as well. Um, mostly for, for billing purposes, not really involved with any projects. So, there, there are two employees under that line item, but, uh, the question is, what, what does that even look like going forward, quite honestly?
All right. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Uh, it is eleven o'clock. I know there's probably questions online. However, uh, we have, uh, multiple people waiting on us as well. I know we covered a lot of ground today. Um, so there's always, next week, I'll apologize, we'll try to review those questions. But there's always next week to, to get some of these answers as well. Um, if there's no additional comments to the public, any announcements, anything to cover? All right. With that, I would entertain a motion, um, to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Say it.
Eleven o'clock.
Ms. Coleman?
Hi.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you. Mr. Davis, Mr. Power, Mr. Pop.
Hi. Thank you, everyone. Sorry that we have to jump off. We'll, we'll be back.